Okay. Are you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Welcome to West Covina Special Council Meeting. I'm so glad to see everybody back in the room. Okay, and welcome back. It's been three months. We're missing all this action. And again, welcome to our special council meeting. And tonight, invocation will be led by Pastor Julian Lut from West Covina Hills Seventh-day Adventist Church, followed by Pledge of Allegiance led by me. And now, meeting in session. All rise, please.
Let's pray. Precious Lord, it has been a strange several months, to say the least. I pray that we do not take the privilege of gathering like this for granted, that we make best use of the medium, that we use it to inform good decision-making. Lord, I pray for your wisdom as each of the decision-makers here considers the various items on the agenda. I pray also, Lord, that you will make each of us vigilant about responding well to the public health crisis that we are in the middle of. But, Lord, I also thank you for how your hand has been stayed in the midst of this, that there are so many healthy here. Lord, I pray for your presence in these chambers during this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. And everyone, please follow my lead and put your right hand to your heart and face the flag. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Have a seat, please. And Assistant City Clerk, a roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopezviado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
Thank you. And City Attorney, do you have anything to report from our close session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, we are going to our presentation. And I want to welcome our superintendent for Roland Unified School and Dr. Julie Mitchell. And I thank you so much for you to show up in person. It's really our honor. And every time we have an event and we invite Roland Unified School, you always show up and to support the city and to support your school. And while I'm here, I want to congratulate you for all the kids from Roland Unified School District and the Longgall High School. It's kind of in our West Covina, address West Covina, but it's on the county area, but surrounded by the West Covina residents. And most of our South Side residents went to go to your school, Roland Unified School, to our Longgall High School. And from Big League Dream, South Side, and it's two valley, that is our city, and it all go to your school. So I want to thank you so much to help us. And I went to your event with orchestra. That's magnificent to see such a magnificent performance. So I want to thank you again for your leadership for this school, so outstanding for our children and can graduate from Longgall High School, become very good high school. And maybe you can say something regarding all these children, and we're so proud of them. Go ahead, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So thank you for inviting me to share a few words about our senior class. As requested, we have a short video that you'll be able to see regarding how we honored and recognized our graduates in the class of 2020. So as was shared, this has been clearly a unique year. On March 13th, our Board of Education had an emergency meeting, and we dismissed all of our students that afternoon. And our students did not return. And we are planning for their return August 10th. But we did not have any additional in-class, on-campus, at schooling. But all of our students, starting Monday, March 16th, were enrolled online in learning through virtual learning and distance learning. So we continued our contact on a daily basis with our students. For our seniors, we recognize that they did not have the opportunity for many of their traditional senior activities, from their senior prom to their senior sunsets, their graduation, many of their activities. So we did try our best in terms of how can we recognize their accomplishments. We had, part of the video you'll see is when they're having the opportunity to pick up their caps and gowns. We also did a graduation, so June 4th was our last day of school. So we graduated every student, one student at a time. So we set up a stage in front of the campus, and each student had a red carpet, walked to pump and circumstance, had the processional, and were able to graduate with their family in the car, right up close and personal, walk across the stage, have their name read, have video as well as photography taken of them, and then proceed on. So we did, it was a long and warm day, but 110% worth it to recognize the efforts of our students. So our staff was there to cheer them on, all participating in physical distancing, but really honoring them and the accomplishments that they had. On Monday night, just this past Monday night, at 6:00, we had a Facebook Live event where we took that in video of the entire day of graduation, and we recognized and showed each student one by one rocking across the stage. So they were able to watch graduation as a class from their own homes and see it on Facebook Live. So if that's something that you're interested in, it's a few hours long, but it's all the student speeches. It's everything that's there to recognize the class of 2020. So we just have a short clip to share with you this evening. So thank you very much for having me here tonight.
Go ahead, play the video, please.
Congratulations!
Hello, this is Dr. Andrea Brumbach, Principal at Nogales High School. I am incredibly grateful for the support of the class of 2020 from the city of West Covina. Despite our graduates' historic and unique experience, they have completed high school with grace and honor, and we were thrilled to be able to recognize their accomplishments on campus. We are proud of these students who completed the requirements under unusual and difficult circumstances. Yet, due to their dedication and commitment, they were able to shine. Congratulations to the class of 2020, and again, thank you to the city of West Covina.
It's beautiful, kind of too short. We want longer. Man, I was thinking about, yeah, we could play all day long. But thank you so much, Dr. Mitchell. Outstanding. We're so proud with all those kids and graduate class 2020. And we want to wish them all the best for their revenue for future. And we very confident that all these West Covina kids will become somebody, okay? And they are our future hope. That's why we're here, fighting for our future. And again, I want to thank you again for all your dedication. And again, how many times we've been here, many, many numerous times for shop local after-school program and for some kind of donation for the after-school program for the kids have a good program. And I saw it in my eye, and how proud all those children and to play orchestra, to play instrument, and to be proud. And our member for their future. And I want to thank you, I cannot thank you more for your dedication and leadership for Roland Unified. We have three major schools, Covina, Valley Unified, West Covina Unified, and the Roland Unified. About 90% of our population. But thank you, thank you again. Thank you so much for your dedication. You want to say something to?
I just want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Education for having us here tonight and for recognizing our students. And Dr. Brumbach sends her regrets that she wasn't able to be here as well, but you were able to see her a little bit and hear her. She's the principal at Nogales High School. So again, thank you very much for the recognition on behalf of the Board of Education, the students at Nogales High School. So thank you for having us.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, again. And now, we move on to oral communication. And we have a live audience over here. Are we going to start with the audience first, and then we go to the person sending the email or people on the phone? So would you please call the first one?
Good evening, Mayor. Our first speaker is Jerry Pachis, followed by Mr. Jim Grivitch.
Good evening. My question is really for the, or comment and question is really for the city manager, and it's really more of one for reassurance for some of us, clarification. At the June 3 Finance and Audit Committee meeting, contracting with LA County for fire services was discussed in terms of the budget. And at last night's town hall, the decision about contracting, I want to make sure I understand this correctly, for LA County's for fire services would not be made at this time. So, am I correct that when the council approves the budget tonight, I'm assuming they will, they aren't also approving a switch to county services?
Please. Thank you for being here again tonight and for the question. You are correct. What the council is being asked to consider and approve tonight is the preliminary budget, which reflects no changes to fire service, although there's some changes to the line items affecting our fire department specifically, the overtime portion of their budget.
That makes sense.
The other options for fire service are still under consideration, but we're awaiting some more data. I spoke today to Daryl Osby, LA County Fire Chief, who's well aware of how keenly we need those numbers before any decision could be made. And we might have something by the end of this week or the first part of next week. And he's working very hard on that. But there's no part of this meeting tonight that affects that aspect.
Thank you very much.
Jerry, I just want to assure you, without a solid number, we're not going to discuss about county fire right now.
I was referring to discussing the budget.
Yeah, we only talk about budget, not about the county fire.
Mayor, that's what I was discussing, the budget item tonight and what was in it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, please.
Jim Grivitch.
The, I've been, as you kind of mentioned just now, spending a lot of time talking about what I would consider the trees. And tonight, I'd talk, which meant the fire department. Right now, I'd like to talk a little bit about the forest, which is the whole budget. I'm concerned that the budget that's on the table right now, which was just labeled the preliminary budget, is not really balanced. There's words in the document that say it's balanced, but it's not really balanced. The Finance Director has said several times that the expectation now is that our revenue will not be as high as the number that's in the budget. And there's also issues with the balance from last year. She also stated that it's felt now that the balance won't be as high as it was stated in that document, the preliminary budget. Basically, that means you have less resources available for you this coming year than is in the printed book. To me, that's a real problem. You're being asked to adopt that document, knowing that some of the numbers aren't right. And it's also a problem with respect to the financial management of the city. Because while there's been some discussion about some things in the fire department, there really hasn't been discussion about the overall situation that there's going to need to be reductions, and I think significant reductions, to match the revenue. And I think that needs to take place, and it needs to take place soon to match the reality. I've done my own analysis. This has nothing to do with anything that's been by city staff. And I believe that right now, the city's probably about $4 million short, based on what I know. That's a lot of money. And I don't know if it's accurate, but it's my best judgment at this time. But I know the number has to be big. And the question is, what is the city going to do? We can't just continue business as usual. The expenditures are going to have to show some changes. And right now, the line items that are in that budget are all, what they are, they're not $4 million less or any number less, except for the overtime in the fire department. That's the only number that actually was significantly lower than last year. So I feel that this is not a real budget, not an adopted budget. It's just kind of what in my mind would be a tentative budget. And I hope that sometime soon, the city would be adopting an actual real budget, a real plan with real numbers that we can go forward with. So I'm not sure what we're calling this budget when we adopt it tonight, but I'm suggesting tentative. And then perhaps in a couple of months, we come back with a formal adopted budget for the year.
Thank you, Jim. Next, please.
Peter Din, followed by Brian Tabataibai.
Hello, guys. It's good to see you guys. Just got to say a couple of things. I wanted to talk about the budget, too. I don't know if you guys know what we're about, Change West Covina. Basically, we started it just because of the issues in the budget. We're just a couple of young kids, you know, looking at the issues within our community, and we see glaring issues in the budget that we need to fix. Like Jim Grivitch said, I really want to push for the budget tonight to be tentative and for it to be changed, because obviously, there's a pandemic going on. And, you know, the idea that all of our financial problems have come from the pandemic is just wrong. But we need to actually come up with solutions in order to fix that, because the pandemic is real. Also, I wanted to clarify what defunding the police means. I know that's a very scary thing to say. If somebody hears someone say that, they're like, oh, what does that mean? But it simply just means a reallocation of funds away from the police. I myself, you know, I believe in my heart that the police have one of the hardest jobs in the country. They have to do things that they obviously shouldn't be doing. Homelessness is not a criminal issue. Mental health specialists, social services should be doing a lot of the jobs that police are doing right now. I think if you ask any police officer if they would take less pay in order to do a significantly less job that fits their training more, I think overwhelmingly, they would say yes. If anyone thinks his idea is radical, I can assure you, it's not. I've had a lot of people send me things from cities like Riverside, cities like La Puente, who have taken money away from the police department and reallocated their funds. And that's not even just a personal opinion of mine, of course. You know, my personal opinion is, I have my own personal opinion about public safety, but I think that this is the best choice for our finances right now. Reallocating funds is the best choice to try to dig us out of the hole that we're in right now a little bit. You know, it's time to rethink what public safety is, in my opinion, and know that crime is not random, and most likely, crime happens because of the failure of the community. I really don't want to see West Covina fail as a community. The reality is, this budget, we voted on tonight. I urge, you know, us to make actions in favor of the residents and, you know, not any special interests. So, you know, make pushes to change West Covina. If not change right off the bat, then we just ask for transparency, show the budget results. I mean, we have it, the last time I checked, people said police services were the least of their priorities. So that's what the residents have said. You know, I really don't know what the harm of letting people vote on a lot of these things are. So, you know, I'm just pushing for transparency and letting the people vote. I have my own opinions, but at the end of the day, that's where I think we should go in terms of our finances. So thank you, guys, for letting me speak.
Thank you so much. Good speech. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, please.
Good evening, council. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that the land we inhabit today was the stolen home of the Gabrielino Tongva people, the original stewards of this land. This land, the land that surrounds us, is much more than what is in front of our eyes. This land reflects our histories. I find myself once again in front of this council reflecting on history, the history of our people, the history of our systems, the history of our institutions. As a historian, knowledge of that past gives meaning to our stories. Without an understanding of that past, the anecdotes we choose to share simply become an expression of our biases, our prejudices, our ignorance. And yet, we understand the power of stories. It's why a story of a petty theft or a dead child in San Diego gets shared. It's why WCPD shares the images of recent arrests. Stories, when shared by a person in leadership, can justify a bloated police budget or the moving of fire to the county. It becomes the tool to stoke fear, the tool to maintain power. So today, I choose to share a story of my own, but not a story alone, one that is steeped in context and in history. On December 7, 1941, infantryman John F. Rodriguez stationed in Hawaii found himself in a world of chaos. My tia Lisa would share those words with me, the only words her father ever shared about his experiences in the war. From the chaos of Pearl Harbor and his subsequent tour in Europe, John would return to his wife and settle in Boyle Heights, one of the few places they were allowed to live. Through hard work and saving, the family would open a deli across from General Hospital and look to move east to the new homes. According to the city's website, modern-day West Covina came about as a result of remarkable expansion during the post-World War II building boom. West Covina became America's fastest-growing city between 1950-1960, with the population increasing 1,000% from less than 5,000 to more than 50,000 citizens. Those words, "expansion," 1950, 1,000%, so much in those lines, yet so much hidden, so much history left out of that story. Those who know the history know the fuel was not World War II, but the Supreme Court. In 1948, the US Supreme Court in the landmark case Shelley versus Kramer struck down racially restrictive housing covenants. In one ruling, the entire landscape of urban cities would forever be changed, and the suburbs would be born. The building boom fueled by white flight and the fear of integration in Los Angeles created this place, our place. It would birth our institutions, our systems, our police. It would produce a fear that would deny an opportunity to purchase a home to men like veteran John Rodriguez, a fear that would create a city hostile to the other. James Baldwin once said, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." This is the history of our birth. It is a history that cities all across the country are being asked to confront, many for the first time. It is the history that informed my decision to speak in December. It is this history that motivated my comments on the 16th and my letter to the Tribune, and it is what brings me here today. Our city has a troubling racial history. It is time we move towards healing. I once again ask the council to recommend that WCPD stop the practice of sharing booking images, which only serve to maintain a racism we should have long moved past. I ask the council to begin envisioning a budget that does not represent a fear of its neighbors, but one that honors the lives of all residents, including those on our streets. I ask the council to begin to imagine a West Covina that divests from fear and invests in the health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Next, please.
Steve Bennett, followed by Colleen Rosati, City Treasurer.
First and foremost, let's thank that guy. He's got a tough job, I get it, but we appreciate what you're doing, and you don't get enough thanks. I know last night, you got thanked, but I'm going to make sure I thank you every time while you're doing this, because I think you deserve it. So I had some prepared comments. I'm going to have to modify them, because Jerry took some of my thunder. You know, tonight, you're discussing the city budget for the fiscal year 2021. That fiscal budget, that fiscal year starts in a couple of weeks. And in this budget, you have revenues versus expenses as being flat. Jim's already pointed out, that's not happening. So we know that this budget is not right. This budget, the numbers are wrong. You're also trying to extend an emergency tonight, an emergency order. You're also in the middle of fiscal emergency, which I think is a bunch of fake fiscal emergency. I think we have a lot of problems in this city from a budget standpoint, from a finances standpoint. I personally think the fiscal emergency is a smokescreen to be able to try to get the fire department switched over to county. If we have truly flat income and revenue, then we don't have a fiscal emergency. Do we have fiscal problems? Yes, but it's not an emergency. If we have a fiscal emergency, it's because you guys have approved budget amendments, and you guys have approved things of the budget last year that were in addition to the spending that we had already approved, that we didn't get the revenue for. That's where the problem comes in. Because as somebody once said at this council meetings, because you guys keep saying, okay, go ahead, no problem, we can do it. That's the problem with this council. We need to stop doing these budget amendments. If we don't have the money, don't spend it. So, let's go back to October. Everyone likes to talk about the MOUs for the police department and the fire department. And I love my police department, I love my fire department, I want my fire department and police department to stay West Covina PD. But you guys approved a 12% pay increase, which comes out between the two departments, about $2.4 million, according to those reports. That's a whole lot of equipment to repair for that fire department. But last year, they weren't concerned about equipment, they were concerned about their pay. Now, all of a sudden, it's concerned about equipment. $2.4 million would pay for a lot of repairs. The first thing we need to do as a council and as a city is we need to get those MOUs rescinded. Those were on the guise of them getting a sales tax passed. Well, they failed. 80% said no. Just like in 1997, 71% said no to going to county fire. I have a feeling you guys don't really understand, or let me rephrase that, maybe not you guys, because you haven't had that decision brought to you yet. I don't think you understand what those votes mean, and that is directed at you, Mr. City Manager. The city has said no to county fire, and we're saying no again. And I look forward to the battle.
Steve, yeah, would you please address us?
So to the city manager, he understands what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I appreciate that. So I hope that this city council listens to the residents. I hope you guys actually pay attention to that meeting last night, because it was loud and clear that we do not want county fire. We're open to some ideas. We're open to fixes. One of those needs to be the rescinding of those MOUs. That's $2.4 million we can use. As for the pandemic, I think we all agree that we're in a unique time, and I'm glad to see that we're able to come back here and stand before you. I look forward to doing that in the future. I want to thank the young people. Mr. Peter Din, he's been very adamant about some things. And it's great to see some young individuals getting involved in our politics. So I encourage you guys to do more, all of you. Whatever side of the aisle, whatever side of the position you sit on to other people, keep doing what you're doing. I know I'm not talking to the council. But anyways, I look forward to seeing you guys in the future. We can elbow bump in the future. Again, rescind those MOUs.
Thank you, Steve. Next, please.
Colleen Rosati, City Treasurer.
Good evening, council, members of the community. Colleen Rosati, elected city treasurer. I'm here tonight in reference to the Agenda Item Number Six, Adoption of City's Financial 2021 Annual Operating and Capital Improvement Program Budget. Noted on the report under Future Challenges, I just had a couple of questions. Can you please address and explain why you may feel that pension costs will be especially high two years from now? The next question is, what is the plan to bring antiquated business license tax structure up to par? What is the, with the escalating cost, the city's current, are they currently working on an RFP for a new animal control service? In May of this year, an amendment of $161,000 was made to the budget due to unforeseen cost. Homeless Services update, if you could give us that information? Can you tell us where the city stands currently on Measure 8 fund from the county? And lastly, can you update the public where we stand currently on sales tax revenue? It was mentioned in May that we were probably going to be in a shortfall of $2 to $4 million. I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Okay, next, please.
Those are all the speaker cards I have, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
So I have about 14 emails that I'll read into the record.
Yeah, go ahead.
Our first is from a caller, Mr. Chin, and he wanted to ask the council when the Cortez Senior Center was going to open and if we could stop fireworks. Senior Center was going to open and if we could stop fireworks. I have his email, I'll work with the departments and get a response back to him.
Got it, okay, thank you. Next, please.
Our next is from Mr. Jim Rudolph. Mayor Wu, Mayor Protem Lopez Viado, Councilmember Castellanos, Councilmember Johnson, and Councilmember Shoemaker. Although engaged in all the events that make up the interaction between the West Covina community and the West Covina Fire Department, it is a rare occasion that the West Covina Fire Management Association takes any advance stance on political issues being debated. This is one of those occasions that fits the exception, and we felt it was necessary that you directly hear of our support for contracting with Los Angeles County Fire Department. We are in unanimous support of this operation, and I feel that the other options are less likely to meet the needs of the citizens. All of us in this fire management association have a long history with the West Covina Fire Department, and we know that you have given all options serious consideration. Please take the time to read and share the attached letter from our association president, Mike Fountain, written in behalf of West Covina Professional Fire Management Association, Local 4594. Honorable counsel, my name is Mike Fountain, and I represent the West Covina Fire Management Association. I have proudly served the community of West Covina for over 25 years, serving as a firefighter, firefighter paramedic, fire captain, and now assistant fire chief, the position I have held for the last six years. Traditionally, the Fire Management Association has remained neutral as it relates to local politics and controversial local issues, but I felt the need to reach out to address current issues directly impacting the fire department and the safety of this community. We are proud of our history of working with the city, the community, and most importantly, providing for the well-being and safety of our firefighters. As you know, we have taken on a dual role, essentially two, two jobs, as both a battalion chief and the additional role as an assistant fire chief. Our willingness to take on dual responsibilities has put us in a unique position to gain significant knowledge and insight into our fire department, our service delivery model, and the many unique challenges it takes to provide fire and EMS service delivery to the community. During the last several months, the city and our fire department have faced several challenges, magnified by recent national events, which has a significant impact to our department. Unfortunately, we continue to see misleading and false information being represented to the community and feel compelled to offer our experience and insights. As it relates to cost of maintaining city fire department has come to the forefront, the Fire Management Association can no longer remain silent. Contracting with the Los Angeles County Fire Department has become a controversial topic, generating incorrect and irresponsible disinformation within the community by critics of consolidation of fire and EMS service. As a part of, as part of a thorough needs assessment, fact-finding, and proposals for service, it has become abundantly clear that contracting with the Los Angeles Fire Department is a solution that will likely offer the best compromise for maintaining fire protection and EMS delivery within the community. A regional approach to providing fire and EMS service is without exception, superior to any other options and/or cuts currently being proposed for the fire department. The ongoing deterioration of our facilities, apparatus, equipment, and other needs can no longer be ignored and must be addressed. The city council has the opportunity to make a decision that will provide stability to city finances while ensuring the safety of our community and our firefighters. Vocal critics of our fire chief accuse him of presenting a skewed analysis of the available options for providing fire and EMS service to the community. Some accuse him of acting in his own best interest, which could not be further from the truth. The West Covina Fire Management Association fully supports Fire Chief Capelli and his leadership. As the fire chief, Vince Capelli is an extremely capable, knowledgeable, and practical leader who has invested in all aspects of the West Covina Fire Department and the community he serves. His extensive expertise and knowledge are well-known throughout the fire service community. Chief Capelli provides true insight into the realities of what it takes to effectively and efficiently manage a fire department. Fire Chief Capelli would not recommend contracting for services with the Los Angeles County Fire Department without thorough consideration of all factors and options. The Fire Management Association fully supports his recommendation. As a 25-year veteran who has served in all aspects of the West Covina Fire Department, I would not be communicating with you if I felt it was not paramount, if it was not of paramount importance to urge you to give your serious consideration to contracting with the LA County Fire Department for fire and EMS services. The positives of a proven regional approach for fire protection, combined with the long-term savings to the city, cannot be ignored and provide for much-needed economic stability, but more importantly, maintain not to reduce service levels in the community. We understand the need and encourage you to carefully evaluate any service delivery model and costs associated, but most importantly, the safety and well-being of the firefighters who serve the community.
Okay, next, please.
Our next speaker is Mr. Sean Wise. Dear mayor and council, it is with great humility and pride that I write to you urging you to support contracting fire and emergency medical services with the County of Los Angeles Fire Department. I have been a proud and dedicated member of this fire department for 10 years and have poured my heart and soul into serving our community. I have mixed emotions about the idea of dissolving the West Covina Fire Department because I always saw myself having a long and dedicated career here. It is a difficult decision to make and one that is hard for me to advocate for. However, I feel it is the right choice for the community. My entire tenure here has consisted of uncertainty and turmoil. Despite the best efforts of very hard-working firefighters, we have always faced significant challenges, staffing reductions, layoffs, aging fire stations, outdated personnel protective equipment and technology, and fire engines that have long outlived their intended service life. Our community deserves the best and should settle for nothing less. The West Covina Fire Department has provided outstanding service for decades, but without the certainty of the funding needed to provide what is required of fire departments. In the 21st century, uncertainty will always exist, and we will struggle to maintain adequate service levels. This is unfair to the community and unfair to the firefighters. The Los Angeles County Fire Department brings a level of depth, resiliency, and stability that could never be achieved by our own fire department. The expectation of our community is for well-trained, well-equipped firefighters and paramedics to show up promptly when they are needed. The county can provide that level of service with great certainty. Sadly, the West Covina Fire Department cannot. When lives and property are on the line, a good enough fire department is not acceptable. There are some members of the community who have voiced opposition and concern about a move to the county, and I understand the trepidation. The reasons for their opinions seem to be emotionally driven or biased on misinformation, based on misinformation. As the elected leaders of our city, I trust you will evaluate the facts and not be swayed by a very small misinformed group. The community trusts you to do what is right and ensure our community is receiving the best emergency services possible, regardless of what the decal is on the fire engine door. This includes putting in place a system that is prompt, effective, full-service, and financially sustainable for decades to come. When deciding between the county or maintaining our department, to me, the answer is clear, and I hope it is clear to you as well. Respectfully, Sean Wise.
Our next speaker is Corillo Castaneda. It was, it was public knowledge pre-COVID-19 that West Covina's finances were in bad shape. In October 2019, California ranked West Covina 17th in worst financial, financial shape in the state. This ranking was apparent in various services throughout the city, not only including the fire department, but also our public works. Not only are our number of West Covina parks rundown, but fire station number one looks like a crack house. If the city cannot find the ins, the insestional fortitude to properly fund our department, then maybe contracting with the county is a good option. If contracting with the county includes upgrades to all equipment and firehouses, then I am all for it. I served in the Navy when Donald Rumsfeld, the former Secretary of Defense, stated, "You go to war with the army you have, not with the army you want or wish to have at a later time. Not giving your first responders the proper equipment, training, or support is just plain wrong and can end up costing more than dollars. It can cost lives. Contracting with the county will provide West Covina with great coverage utilizing far superior equipment by men and women who receive some of the best firefighter training in the nation. Since West Covina has proven incapable of controlling its own budget and properly funding emergency services, I vote to contract with the county. The city has had more than ample time to get their financial affairs in order and has continuously failed to do so. It is time to contract with LA County Fire." Sirillo Castaneda, US Navy retired. Our next speaker is Bill Mansour, West Covina Fire Department Fire Captain. Citizens of West Covina, my name is Bill Mansour. My current rank is Fire Captain, and I have been serving our community for over 19 years as an employee of the West Covina Fire Department. Many of you are aware, the city of West Covina has declared a fiscal emergency and given the current city manager emergency powers to manage this issue. One of the options you have been presented to manage this fiscal emergency is to contract fire department services to Los Angeles County Fire Department, resulting in a three-station model with the current surrounding contract cities supplementing service. Our current fire chief has presented to you that this model will improve response times, resources, and services, resulting in a savings of approximately $50 million over a 10-year period. All options presented to you include some sort of cut, whether it be two stations or laying off employees and reducing the overtime budget. Additionally, it has been presented to you by our current city manager and our current fire chief that the option to contract fire department services with the Los Angeles County Fire Department is the most viable option for the city of West Covina due to the current fiscal emergency. The city manager has also stated numerous times that the current fiscal emergency is unequivocally due to lost revenue from the current and evolving COVID-19 pandemic, which is why these options are being presented to you now. Now let me tell you what you may not know. In February 2019, the West Covina Firefighters Association filed a lawsuit against the city of West Covina and our former fire chief, who was terminated in April of 2019. This lawsuit was settled sometime around the final quarter of 2019. Part of the settlement between the city of West Covina and the West Covina Firefighters Association was to obtain a full survey from the Los Angeles County Fire Department if the public safety tax failed during the March 2020 election. The settlement also included that if the public safety tax succeeded, in addition to the current 12% raises given to the West Covina Firefighters Association, association members would also receive retro pay and additional raises through pay, benefits, and/or incentives. I am only aware of this because our former acting fire chief, who promoted to the position from the rank of firefighter, paramedic, informed me of the settlement shortly after the settlement had been agreed upon and finalized. The former acting fire chief is now the West Covina Firefighters Association Union President and was individually named as a claimant in the lawsuit against the city while he held the acting fire chief position. Subsequently, after completing his time as acting fire chief, he was given a non-budgeted administrative fire captain's position and told me it was part of his contract for serving as acting fire chief. The same information was confirmed to me from one of our current assistant fire chiefs, as well as our current fire chief. If transparency is truly what the city administration wants to convey to its citizens, why not make this settlement public document? So you can see why I'm a little confused and more so concerned that these important facts have not been presented to our citizenry. In lieu of the abstainable current fiscal emergency, these misrepresentations go against city core values, specifically ethical and fiscal responsibility. Finally, I will leave you with this small piece of information, which I believe frames the optics for these unethical personnel and questionable fiscal actions to a larger degree. On or about May of 2019, while attending a concerts-in-the-park event, our current mayor said to me, in the presence of our former mayor and another West Covina Fire Department employees, "You don't do your job, I fire you. That's why I fired Chris Freeland and hired Carmini to the fire police chief and the fire chief on the same day." "Unprecedented," he exclaimed. Currently, practically every new employee on our department has been hired, have direct connections to our current city manager, or those he has hired in high positions. To be clear, becoming a Los Angeles County Fire Department employee would be a relieving reprieve from the current harassing, hostile, and harmful working environment I have endured working in the West Covina Fire Department for the past 19 years. These purposeful misrepresentations, omissions, and inaccurate information are not what the citizens of West Covina deserve. Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Edward Dong.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, city council members. My name is Edward Dong. I live in Baldwin, I lived in Baldwin Park for about two years and later moved to Almonte to complete my middle school, high school, and moved back to the San Gabriel Valley post-college graduation. I pretty much lived in the San Gabriel Valley my entire life and have friends, families, and favorite places to visit all throughout the San Gabriel Valley. I don't usually write letters to the council, but I feel this time I'm done staying silent. Who does the city council think y'all represent? When we saw the Baldwin Park City Council approve their city budget for 2020-2021, it sure did not feel like they represented the community. We do not want to use our hard-earned tax dollars in funding a police system that is racist against minorities, especially our black communities of color. Invest in housing, schools, public programming, our roadways, and public infrastructure is what we need support in. We do not need more police to invoke fear in our colored communities in order to gain dominance. We need to, we need to decriminalize drug offenses. Drug addiction is a disease like gambling and/or smoking cigarettes. We don't criminalize or lock up people who have gambling or smoking problem. We provide counseling services for those people addicted. Stop locking up our friends and families for petty drug offenses. We aren't criminals, and when I say "we," I mean me too, because that used to be me. I may not have the cleanest record, but I did put my family through many difficult situations to make me know that I was doing wrong. Seeing my mom and dad cry while visiting me in jail was enough of a wake-up call for me to look for help. Surprise, surprise, there was not much of help. It only took me three times going to jail, over $20,000 in court fees and fines, and seeing my mom, dad, and brother cry again and again in order for me to get it. Minorities have such a high rate of repeating themselves after they've gone to jail once. I wish there were more programs out there to help provide with records, get another chance in society, and not feel like they have no choice but to steal, sell drugs, or live on the streets in order to make it. Maybe I wouldn't need to go to jail three times if there were programs set up for me to re-assimilate back into the community and be productive and successful. Here's an idea for a program. Let our moms with her chancas be the hand of justice, not the police. Please defund the police and listen to your community members. Thank you, Edward Dong.
Mayor, our next speaker is Cindy Ortega.
Okay, thank you.
I have been a resident of West Covina for over 20 years. I am concerned if our fire department is cut back and how much it will affect my family, friends, and other residents of West Covina. If there are cutbacks in our fire department response time, will be delayed and lives are at stake. I am asking that LA County handle our city's fire department, also our firemen and families, and this is their livelihood. We have a beautiful city here in West Covina, and I want the best for our city. Thank you very much.
Mayor, our next speaker is from the San Gabriel Valley Progressive Action.
Okay, go ahead.
Dear mayor and council, this is the San Gabriel Valley Progressive Action. We're a grassroots collective of West Covina and San Gabriel Valley residents dedicated to amplifying the demands of the Black Lives Matter movement. We demand that you listen to community members and defund the police in the 2020-2021 budget, including police salaries and pensions. We invest the police funds in community services such as housing, transit, healthcare, education, and social services. Across the San Gabriel Valley, people are uniting around the call to defend, defund the police. This is not just a rallying cry, it is a tangible action you should take as city council members, a framework of how cities care for, protect, and strengthen our communities. A proposed budget where 47% of the general funds, $31,163,716, goes to police is unjust. Please reduce that percentage by a significant amount, at least 10% or more. Many residents in West Covina are struggling to survive as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, questioning whether they can afford rent or food if they will get COVID. Healthcare, homelessness, climate change, jobs, education, transportation, these are all areas where the city could invest instead of police. When people have their basic needs met, they do not wish to commit crimes. Investments in communities are what drives public safety, not police. Fund services, not police. We urge you to listen to our demands to defund the police. We implore you to follow the model of the People's Budget LA, which is grounded in community voices and purposes, a reduction of funding in police from 54% to 6%, and a reinvestment in universal aid and crisis management. Build environment and reimagine community safety. Reimagine public safety. Defund the police. Thank you, San Gabriel Valley Progressive Action. Mayor, our next speaker is Apalona Lepe.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Apalona Lepe. I am, I have some thoughts regarding tonight's meeting, specifically the lack of outreach and transparency. I am a young Mexican-American woman in this community who is actively dealing with my mental health issues through persistent therapy treatments. I have been trying to get more involved with our city through attending these meetings and initially sending out email templates, templates that have helped me voice my thoughts. To be met with patronizing remarks from David Carmini, To be met with patronizing remarks from David Carmody, Letty, and others has been disheartening. Through your lack of recognizing your privilege, you cast aside those living with mental illness with comments like this. This does not encourage your community in any way, especially if we are trying to understand issues like tonight's topic. This is your job to remember people like us and properly reach out to us in an effective and transparent way.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Rosalind Silva.
Yeah, go ahead.
The decision whether to keep our fire department or outsource to the county is a decision that concerns most of our residents greatly. As it is important to us all, it feels wrong that a decision be so hastily made without cost breakdowns and objective statistics comparisons of the effects of keeping our services local or not. I urge officials to seriously look into and provide this information to the residents so we may feel more assured in our ability to make the best decision for our city. It is my personal belief we have used COVID as a scapegoat for our financial problems when our poor decisions in budget management came before this pandemic. As a concerned citizen, I hope we can work harder collectively to change this city for the better through transparent collaboration and timely action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Melissa Laredo.
Yeah, go ahead.
I am a resident of West Covina, and I do not feel safe knowing that it would take longer time for help to come when I or my family are in need. I believe the fire department should be upgraded to LA County so they could be paid more, and so the residents of West Covina would be taken care of, especially in emergency situations. I do not want any of the firemen to lose their jobs or their livelihood. Thank you for your time, a concerned citizen, Melissa Laredo.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Amy Wong.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dear Mayor and City Council, this is Amy Wong. I live in Almonte, but like to go to West Covina and shop and eat with my friends. I support the Black Lives Matter movement and urge you to defund the police. Reinvest the police funds into community services such as housing, transit, healthcare, education, and social services. I would like to share an excerpt from the cut. "Defunding the police does not necessarily mean getting rid of police altogether. Rather, it is about reducing police budgets and reallocating those funds to critical and non-neglected areas like education, public health, housing, and youth services. It's predicted on the belief that investing in communities would act as a better deterrent to crime by directly addressing societal problems like poverty, mental illness, and homelessness, issues that advocates say police are poorly equipped to handle and yet are often tasked with. Defunding the police is like a framework shift. I believe West Covina should apply to the 2020-21 budget. A proposed budget where forty-seven percent of general funds goes to police is unjust. Many residents and local businesses in West Covina are struggling due to COVID-19. It's spreading quickly with more cases and deaths every day with no vaccine in sight. Please help make sure residents' basic needs are met, not police needs. Follow the example of the People's Budget LA where they demand the city council to invest in universal needs: housing, security, public health, healthcare, mental health and wellness, and divest from traditional forms of policing. Thank you. Best, Amy J. Wong."
Okay, thank you. Next.
Mayor, our next speaker is Andrew Yip. The West Covina City Council should know that community residents are watching closely as to what they're doing. Allocating forty-seven percent of the general fund to police is immoral and wrong. In fact, it is one of the higher allocations of general funds to police in the San Gabriel Valley. I demand the city council to, one, defund the police; two, invest general funds collected through taxes into other departments. Warm regards, Andrew Yip. Mayor, our next speaker is Xanthi Sanco.
Go ahead.
Hi, citizens of West Covina City Council, city staff. My name is Xanthi, and I've lived here in West Covina for over twenty years. My parents and I are, and now my three children reside in the Fifth District. I usually don't involve myself in city politics because it has never been something I felt comfortable speaking on. However, lately, I feel compelled, and I turned into the last meeting. I work at Queen of the Valley, and of course, in passing, I've heard of rumors of the city going bankrupt, laying off thirty firemen, or possibly going county. I must say, there is no more clear of a time than now to transition to the county option. I see LA County firefighters coming to Queens, and they always have the newest equipment, new or at least matching PPE, power gurneys, et cetera. Our city, our firefighters regularly come in with holes in their knees of their pants, hand-me-down yellow jackets with someone else's name on it, a manual gurney when even the smallest ambulance companies have power. Mr. Wu, you say you have pride when you see your engines driving by. When I drive by Station One on my way to work, you know what word doesn't come to mind? Pride. Ms. Shoemaker, did I hear you correctly that you don't care whether our firefighters have PPE that actually works or have been tested, or sleep-in facilities that aren't disgusting as long as you can call the chief into the office when you're upset? I've never heard someone speak so arrogantly while sitting in such a position. Do what's right. I see it firsthand, your department's struggling mightily to get by despite how great they do with what they can. Thank you, Xanthi Sanco.
Thank you. Next, please.
Those are all the speakers I have, Mayor.
You really? You have more? Sure? Okay. Any audience want to address to council? State your name, please. Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, city council members. My name is, my name is Yusuf Arifin. I'm nineteen years old, and I'm a lifelong resident here in West Covina. I am concerned, but concerned puts it mildly, actually. I'll just say concerned, though. I am concerned about the fact that we have consistently undermined every other department in the city other than public safety. The police department has been allocated with forty-seven percent of the funds, close to half. You have left public services with nine percent, community development with three percent, support services with nine percent. Budgets, I believe, exemplify the residents' values. They are an explicit reminder of what we hold dear. This city is littered with broken sidewalks, dilapidated buildings, and measly public spaces. As a resident here, I believe that if we reallocated money to our other departments, more people would likely come to our city. We could put more money into maintenance and capital improvement projects. We could enhance and develop our public spaces. Everyone in this city cares about public safety, but this is a safe city with poor community and development programs. Please reevaluate the budget, and please make sure that it works to our benefit and not the police and fires' benefit. Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you so much. And any speaker? Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, this is Teresa Kazad.
Teresa.
Yeah, I wasn't planning on speaking. Good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I heard something by the treasurer that caught my attention, and that is, are you thinking of changing the services for animal control?
Not yet. We will talk about this tonight at budget, right?
Right, because I know, well, I kind of heard that there were concerns with inland valley money concerns, maybe they weren't license scenes or whatever. But I want you to be aware of a problem that has existed with not inland valley, but actually LA County. And I had this happen with my own dog, that LA County did not transfer over the files to the inland valley, so they have not been able to follow up. When I tried to register my dog and gave them the information from LA County, they couldn't do it, and they told me they were still waiting. That was like two years ago or whatever, when you first started with inland valley. And I think that issue is still persisting. And I don't know if you know that they are now going out, inland valley is now going door-to-door in July to make sure all the animals are licensed, so that will give you some money. I also, it's really important that inland valley is a no-kill shelter. Baldwin Park is a kill shelter. That's a big difference. So you don't want your animal picked up and then later killed. So please consider that in your considerations tonight.
Thank you so much. Okay, appreciate. Any, any other speaker? Okay, go ahead.
I left my stuff up there.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah.
No, I didn't see that. Maybe it fell through.
And then, do you have a card, yellow?
I do not.
Okay, that's good. After you speak, you can just fill it out later. Okay, your name, please?
Hi, my name is Erin Lopez. I'm twenty years old, lifelong resident of West Covina. I just wanted to speak for a little bit about the lack of transparency that the residents of West Covina feel with the city council. I know, especially in regard to the switch to county, a lot of residents aren't even, they don't know that that's even on the table, they don't know it's an option. I spoke to my parents about it after attending last night's meeting. They have no idea, and I think there's just a big disconnect between the residents and the local government here. Since we started change in West Covina about a month ago, we've had dozens and dozens of people come and talk to us, asking us for information. We've done our own research, we've put in the work, and we do have the answers for them, but I think residents should be getting that from their local officials. And I just really urge you to put more things on, like the website. It's very difficult sometimes to know when there's meetings. When we've done our own research, we've seen a lot of foreplay errors, broken links, so it's very difficult to access a lot of information specifically regarding the police department and the fire department. So I think making that a lot more clear and transparent so residents can come to their own conclusions and their own opinions on city topics. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you so much. Good job. Okay, any other speaker want to address us? Okay, if none, I'm going to close the public comment, and I'm going to move on to, manager, would you please respond some of the concern regarding transparency, the broken link, and animal shelters regarding the, okay, the deficit, about half million dollars, okay, and, okay, illegal, how to stop the illegal firework, okay, and when the senior center will be opened again, okay, and some of those things, I think you have some record. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. A number of comments, and I thank all the speakers for spending the time to share these concerns and thoughts, and I'll try to respond to as many of these as I can. The comments regarding the budget actions, that's an agenda topic for later tonight. We're gonna have a staff report and then some council discussion about those things. I won't speak to those. Regarding the concerns about the pension cost rise, we do get an actuarial report every year and have briefed council about those anticipated cost increases in that category. I know at the February fourth meeting, there was a PowerPoint, and I'd be happy to share that with, with our treasurer. Regarding the RFP for animal control, I would say generally, we're looking at all options in service provision, including animal control. That's one where there really are only two options, and we're looking at both right now. Regarding sales tax revenues, we've got detailed reports for every month of this year through May, and we can let the finance director speak to those things as part of the budget report. I'm looking for other topics. Several speakers spoke about LA County Fire. As mentioned earlier this evening, that is not on the agenda tonight, but it is something that is under consideration. And frankly, before the council could be asked to make any decisions about those options, we need, we need some more data, we need some more information, we need some more facts, and those are forthcoming. I spoke today to LA County Fire Chief for that one particular option, and he anticipates having some better figures for us, more complete figures for us by the end of this week or the first part of next. At last night's town hall meeting, we've had a number of meetings this month, but at last night's, several of the residents wanted another meeting with those that are concerned about that issue, and I promised them that once we had this further information from the county, we'd reconvene, probably in this chamber, so I still plan to do that. The comments about the transparency and the website links being broken, I'll, I'll review those and see if we can get those all functioning. Remind me, Mayor, were there other things that you wanted me to try and speak to?
And to stop the illegal firework, okay, okay, it's happened all the places nighttime, okay, I can hear all the places too, okay. I think it's close to Councilman Casiano home, they have a major, okay, like July Fourth professional on the street.
I have my own professional fire show.
Yeah, exactly. And it's, yeah, I think it's out of control, and we really have to, okay, help, okay, our residents to kind of, what the way we can stop this. We know, we know, we understand, pandemic, people stay home, and then now they frustration, okay, and they're frustrated, so they maybe add on some of this, and we understand, but at the same time, we need to be courtesy and for all the people, and, okay, they have a pet, okay, or they have a baby, so how we make sure people understand, West Covina, we are zero tolerance about the illegal firework, okay. All I think, and second thing, the senior center, when will be open, and, and we will address about the senior meal plan too, okay, we want to make sure we still continue to provide the service for them, so this is what I think the people really concerned about. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'll take the last question first regarding the senior center. We intend to be reopened there. We're trying to transition back to normal with our parks and our community centers, so we're aiming for July sixth. Regarding the senior meal program, we had to make some significant changes. We used to serve a hundred and fifty seniors a day congregant style with our city employee as the chef, a hot meal in the senior center. That all changed under this situation and has bloomed into more than five hundred and twenty-five or five hundred and fifty meals being delivered every day. We did get some supplemental money from the county and from the Community Development Block Grant Program. We're gonna have to watch those contracts very carefully and see what we could do to meet those needs, because I know we're meeting several needs there. I'll owe you a report about that.
I think, city manager, I think, okay, with current our increasing of confirmed cases, okay, because we open it up, so we need to make sure our seniors still stay home. I really disagree for them to come to senior center right now. Okay, maybe we have one month to monitor the situation. I think we should continue to carry on, okay, deliver to their home to make sure they're safe, because, okay, I think the senior, okay, right now, we just want them to, okay, be healthy, okay, and we don't want them to get sick, okay, because they come to senior center to pick up the food. So I hope you consider it about that and continue to carry on about the senior meal plan for delivery and to make sure, I know county possible cut down the funding, but we need, we need to find a way to adjust, address that, but again, this is now the, this is from our email, okay, answering, but I think this is a major concern, we need to continue, carry on. And regarding the young lady, regarding the, okay, you can talk to Paulina regarding how to help us to make sure, we want to make sure all the people can receive the information, okay, and we, we really want to encourage young people to engage into, okay, and you are very tech savvy, so maybe show us what we need to improve. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, appreciate. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say thank you, and we don't mind partnering also. Before I got here, our push for social media and all that wasn't as great, so the city has improved. Of course, it's not to the level of technology and everything to what we'd like to be, so we don't mind, you know, partnering up and so forth with that. In regards to the fireworks, I know he touched up a little thing. Last year, that was the biggest issue. So last year, I did wanting, I wanted to push for the enforcement, so we implemented a, the thousand-dollar fine. It's there. I know this year, they've confiscated a bunch of fireworks for one. It is hard to catch, because the fireworks is everywhere, it's not, it's in all districts, including my area where it, it's so loud, the alarm, the cars go off, but obviously, they have to catch them in the act. If you do have that information, you could also email it, email the address so that they can kind of survey and look out. They did, I believe, they were able to find, catch one, they did find that one, but it's, it's a group effort, because you have to go through all the city. Any broken links that anyone finds, feel free to send us an email, let us know. I know one resident did on one, and Paulina quickly fixed it, so thank you, but we don't see everything, we're not, we can't catch everything, but if, you know, we work together, we can fix all those things. So you're more than welcome to send us an email, and we'll take care of it. So thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, then we, yeah, go ahead. I was thinking about who the heck's talking behind me, okay?
And if technology fails, the council regularly meets on the first and third Tuesday of each month, planning commission second and fourth Tuesday. So unless it's a special meeting, some other time, that's where you'll find us. And then, I wanted to address a comment that a resident directed towards me, and I'm not quite sure how it got so lost into the translation, but the discussion she's referencing was a conversation between the chief and I at the last meeting where the community had expressed that it is important to them to maintain local control and accountability with the fire department. It had nothing to do with whether or not I want to change, if I think it's a good idea to change. I've submitted approximately and asked approximately thirty-five questions that I need answered before I make that decision. So the discussion was solely on local control, which has always been an important issue to our residents, and so it was not a discussion on whether or not I believe to our residents, and so it was not a discussion on whether or not I believe our fire department needs the proper equipment.
Okay, thank you so much, okay, I'm going to close the oral communication, you have more? I want to move on, okay, continue.
I actually wanted to address the question that was said about me as well, you know, I don't share everything, but I like to let people know that I do have close family members, I actually am a caregiver to one with mental disability, so when they say that I have no, you know, in regards to that, it's false, and I do work in, I work in LA, I actually work in East LA Boyle Heights area, so I just wanted to bring it out there so that people understand that I do have family members in certain situations, so, you know, if they, if anybody out in the public, you know, wants to email me, call me, I'm open, so they're more than welcome to discuss anything further, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem, okay, and we have enough, okay, thank you so much, okay, we move on, next agenda, and the manager report, go ahead, please.
Mayor, we had scheduled one of those.
Oh, you don't have that? I would think about you missed the manager report, so I add it on back.
We look forward to that.
You've been lazy, okay, okay, now we're going to the consent calendar, I'm sorry, I'm just joking, I know you have a lot of things to do. Consent calendars, okay, do you, City Council, any person want to approve any items?
No.
Okay, none, okay, do I have a motion to approve agenda 1, 2, 3?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve 1, 2, 3.
Okay, and the Councilman Johnson, okay, and the Mayor Potem, okay, I have a motion moved by Councilman Johnson and seconded by Mayor Potem Lopez Viado, roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, okay, agenda approved 5-0, okay, and we move to the agenda number, item number four, West Covina Citywide Sewer Service Charge, okay, this matter set for public hearing is for authorizing the collection of the annual sewer service charge through the county tax bill. And City Managers, okay, who is going to present, okay, hold on, City Clerk verified the proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, Mayor, proper notice has been given.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, okay, we are going to open the public hearing with Covina Citywide Sewer Service Charge, Mr. Carmini City Manager, who will present the staff report.
Mr. Persico, the city's Assistant City Manager will present this report.
Yeah, Assistant City Manager, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members and public, this is a public hearing to set rates for the upcoming calendar year for the citywide sewer maintenance district. The maintenance district was established in 1978, and it assesses charges to residential properties which are connected to the city sewer system. The charges, the collection of those charges go to maintain the city system and to fund capital improvements. The city council, previous city council in fiscal year 19, excuse me, 2017, 2018, adopted a five-year fee schedule, this is the fifth year of those increases. On May 5th, the city council received a report, engineer's report, which established a budget for the upcoming year and also set the public hearing for tonight. The proposed rate increase due to cost increases of aging infrastructure is 5%, which works out to about $3, a little over $3.72 per property per year. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution 2020-62 approving the sewer charges and placement of the assessment on the upcoming tax rolls. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager, and our council member, any question? No question?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, okay, then I'm going to, okay, Assistant City Clerk, have you received any written protest, objection, comments concerning the West Covina Citywide Sewer Service Charge?
I have a, Speaker, Mr. Jim Grivitch.
Go ahead, Jim.
Actually, a question. When I was examining the preliminary budget, I noticed that the sewer fund seemed to have an increasing balance each year, and I don't understand why we would be increasing the fees if the balance is going up each year, that's basically it.
Good question, yeah, Assistant City Manager, would you please answer the question?
Certainly, there is a fund balance which is maintained, it's between half of the annual year budget and full year budget, because the property taxes, I think as most people know, come in twice a year, so we need to be able to pay those costs on a monthly basis, not as revenues come in. We also do have a fund balance, because as I mentioned, there is aging infrastructure, and there are a number of capital improvement projects that we, the council will see later on tonight when the budget is looked at, so that's the reason for the fund balance. We do believe that these costs are appropriate and necessary to maintain the system.
Okay, okay, good, okay, and then, so, Assistant, okay, Assistant City Clerk, okay, will you read any comment received into public record? It's none, right? We don't have any record?
None there.
Okay, is there anyone present who wish to comment, I hope James already commented, anybody want to comment? Anything, want to say anything about the sewer issue? Okay, none, then I'm going to close the public comment, I'm going to go back to the council, okay, discussion, any question, comment, okay, about this, otherwise, do I have a motion to approve?
I do have a question.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
With the increase, it's saying the total projected revenue will be 3.9 million, and including the balance from the previous year of 2.4 million, we're only projecting that our operating budget for fiscal year 2020 to 21 is 2.277 million, so why is this increase needed when we would still have a balance that would cover your half to whole that we carry in there for the month-to-month or big expenses?
We do have our consultant here from Willdan, actually, they're here on the phone, they've dialed into the go-to meeting, I'd like to introduce them and have them talk about the engineer's report and those costs.
Johnny, are you available?
It'll just be one moment before we can get her on the phone.
Yeah, go ahead, we're about 9.
No, we don't. Are you available to comment at the meeting?
Yeah.
Were you able to hear a shit?
Yes, can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
Ask him why he's recommending the increase in what capital improvement projects he's anticipating that we will need funds for, well, sewer funds for. It's because he's not here.
We're connecting.
Can you also make sure that the mic is really close, because yesterday I couldn't hear?
Since we are waiting, can I ask a question, follow, okay, Councilmember Shoemaker regarding, if this proposed increase, Assistant City Manager, Assistant City Manager? Okay, okay, following question, so, okay, if you propose increase, how much per household, okay, increase on public tax?
$5 per service unit.
$5?
Per service unit.
Per service?
Unit.
Okay, so, is that based on what, based on the per household, no matter how big the property, the last size, how about the apartment? Okay, what, how you, okay, be fair to charge the sewer for each of household, I understand, okay, and we have aging infrastructure, we need to make sure we have enough funding, but I just want to know, I think, follow, okay, okay, it's council members, okay, that it is, okay, and the first thing is, this is necessary, because we have a pandemic, okay, people really struggling to pay bill right now, so it's that, okay, and I understand we need to accumulate the funding for in case, because we are 1923, set up the city, and my house, the old 1950, so a lot of old infrastructure need to update, we understand, okay, so, but maybe you can give us a more clarified household, okay, how much is that, okay, because, okay, Addison proposed 14% increase, okay, so a lot of things increase, increase on the, okay, for our, okay, residents, so we want to make sure that this is proper in this time being.
So the fees are for residential dwelling units, it is a flat fee per dwelling unit. For non-residential, as is shown here, the fee is based, set at 667 square feet for commercial properties as well as industrial properties. So that's how the fees are calculated. The rate increase is noted in the staff report as 5%, so that is a increase from $74.40 to $78.12, that's an annual assessment.
So it's $4 more?
$3.72.
$3.75 per household?
Per household annually, correct.
So property owner have paid $3.75?
That is correct.
Okay, per years for our potential sewer infrastructure update?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, I wish, do you have, are you ready?
We're still trying to get her.
Well, I've come up with another question, because you mentioned that the city council in 1718 approved five years, that we're at the end of those five years, but that math doesn't make sense to me. So are we actually being asked to codify the increase that was already there, or is this an additional increase over the rates they set?
The action that the council took in 2017, 2018 was to establish...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The action that the council...
You know, you know, rather than waiting, okay, can we, I think, okay, Councilman Johnson has a suggestion, maybe we table this?
I would like to make a motion to retable this, I would like to see the engineers here, I mean, we're trying to get them on the phone, answer some critical questions that the other council members would like to hear, I can't see why we can't wait till the next meeting, they come up with an answer instead of trying to get them on the phone.
If this has urgency to approve tonight?
If it has urgency, if not, I'd like to see it come through.
We do need to place the items on the tax roll, I believe our deadline is August 10th to get the information to the council.
August 10th, so we have time, so, July 7th, we can, we can talk to you July 7th.
We could do this on, at the July 7th meeting, and we will certainly have the engineers here to give us reports.
Okay, so you're okay with table? Okay, so, so I have a motion, I will move by, I think table this, okay, anything increased, I think we should have our engineer come over here, explain to us why, I know $3.75 a year is not even a big deal, but when you accumulate a lot of things, and when you increase, and they explain to us, I think residents can accept that we accumulate this for the future sake, because we have a lot of infrastructure possible in question. So I have motion moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by, okay, our, okay, Councilmember Shoemaker, yeah, go ahead.
Can I understand your motion be to continue the hearing?
Continue the hearing, continue the hearing, and then bring back on July 7th, so we can have a well, well done, right? No, trans tax, right?
Mr. Mayor, have the engineer here.
Well, we want engineer here in person.
That is correct, yes.
So right on the phone, I think if we can be here, he can, she should be here too, let's risk together, okay, so anyway, I have a motion, and the roll call, please.
Dario did, but I also have one question before we vote, Mr. Persico, you were answering my question regarding the timeline.
Yes, so the action the council took in 2017, 2018 was to establish a five-year schedule of increases, what, the item before the council tonight is just to confirm the fee increases that were laid out originally by that council in 2017, 2018. We are not deviating, nor are we increasing the actions that the council laid out previously.
So also, got it, so this is a five years, okay, previously, okay, and has been approved, and right now, just because the time's up, so we need to, we confirm again?
Well, every, every year the council...
Every year, so they have increased.
Every year we have to vote.
So because I think of, now we just have to double confirm.
An action to place it on the tax roll, so this is just, and the reason for five...
Yes, because I don't necessarily agree with the previous council, who just did a five-year increase each year.
Okay, so we table, roll call, please?
Continue.
Continue, okay, let's continue, and roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, so motion approved 5-0 to continue the hearing for next meeting will be July 7th, okay, thank you, and then move on to the next item, item number five, West Covina Lighting and Maintenance District, this matter set for public hearing is for West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District, where the City Clerk verified the proper legal notice has been given?
Proper notice has been given, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, I shall open the public hearing on the West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District, okay, Mr. Carmini City Manager, who will present the staff report?
Again, this is Mr. Persico, the city's Assistant City Manager.
Yeah, go ahead, Assistant City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council and community members, this is the public hearing to set rates for the citywide lighting and landscaping district. The district was established in 1976, and it does encompass all properties within the city of West Covina. The city also pays on properties which it owns into the special benefit district. In, on May 5th of this year, the city council received the engineer's report and set the public hearing date for this evening. The action that is before the city council this evening is to increase these rates by $1.05 per year, again, it should actually be for fiscal year 2021, which is the upcoming fiscal year. The rates were approved by voters previously, and as required annually, the city council is required to place these increases, to take an action to place these increases on the tax roll, so the action before the city is to confirm the voter-approved increase, and that is 1.945%, which again, is approximately just over $1 per year. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution 2020-62 confirming the diagram and assessment for the citywide lighting and landscaping assessment district for fiscal year 2021, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you so much, Assistant City Managers, okay, any question for our council member? If none, yes, no, 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 okay, then, okay, Assistant City Clerk, have you received any written protest, objection or comment concerning the West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District?
I have received none, Mayor.
Okay, and on the, any comment received, the public record called from the speaker who wished, anyone wish to speak on this agenda? Jim, are you sure? You have all the comment, this one, it's been no special, no, nothing to talk? Okay, all right, I'm going to move on, I'm, you guys sure I'm going to close, okay, public comment, I'm going to move on, okay, back to the council discussion and vote, okay, any question, comment? Are you sure you don't have any comment this time?
I think it's hilarious that we vote to increase assessments on ourselves, I mean...
Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion.
Okay, I have...
And I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Councilman Johnson moved the motion, and I have Councilman Castellano second, and roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and motion approved 5-0, then we move into the main course of tonight, item number six, fiscal year 20 and 2021, preliminary budget discussion, Mr. Carmini City Manager, who will present the staff report, and I hope we don't have repeat, we listened to three, four times already, we want to have something new information and make sure, okay, and to explain to us and how we approve this, okay, and the preliminary budget, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, good evening. At last night's meeting, we offered to present this report, and I only received audible groans from the audience, so we are not going to give the same PowerPoint that people have seen, I think...
Thank you so much.
...eight times this month. We do have a brief report to give you, and Director Byrd and I will be doing that together.
Yeah, go ahead, please, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Carmini, members of the council.
Thank you, City Manager Carmody, members of the council. A brief outline of this presentation tonight is, we're going to start out talking about community outreach, then go into our budget philosophy, the budget challenges that we had, key points, and recommendations. Our outreach dates, on June second, we presented the preliminary budget. We released it to, to the public and to the city council that night. The following evening, we met with the Finance and Audit Committee on June third. And then there was a community meeting the following week on June ninth. And last night, we had another community meeting. And then, June third through the twenty-first, we had an online community survey. Moving on to the budget philosophy, so we adopted a conservative approach. We are recommending a balanced budget. We would very much like to adequately maintain reserves of the city and maintain long-term financial stability. The budget challenges that we encountered along the way, you will remember, on March sixteenth, the businesses of the city were shut down, which resulted in major loss of our significant revenues, sales tax, hotel occupancy tax, to just name a couple. It resulted in loss of city businesses, and I believe even with the reopening, some of those businesses still have not opened, and I'm not sure they will come back to the city. So that resulted in loss of employment, and we're facing a potential second wave, we don't know. And of course, there's always rising costs in our city contracts. Some key points to go over, and I know I've said this before, but I'm going to repeat it for emphasis, this has been by far the most difficult budget year that I have ever encountered in my twenty-five years of public service. The state and county orders caused unprecedented business shutdown, causing major income issues for the city. It resulted in uncertainty going forward. With our budget projections, we base that on status quo, because we just don't know at this point, and I've said it before, that we'll continue to monitor these and bring these back to the city council. We're going to do it on a monthly basis until we get some better projections, and if we need to, we will make changes to the budget. There are no layoffs proposed in this budget. We did institute a hiring freeze, and those positions will be filled as needed, if we consider them to be essential. And I also eliminated all conferences and meetings. Continuing on with our key points. Sorry. During the fiscal emergency, revenues are diff, very difficult to predict this year. And like I said, we're going to monitor them and continuously report that to the city council. This, by adopting this budget tonight, it's going to allow the city to continue operations without any cessation in, in our current provision of services to the residents of West Covina. I also wanted to point out that West Covina is one of four full-service cities in L.A. County that doesn't have a supplemental dedicated revenue source for public safety. Oh, it turned off. Sorry. Sorry about that. The budget reflects...
Sorry, Robyn, sorry to interrupt. Could you repeat that again? I think that's important for everyone to understand, especially because we've received questions about comparing our police and fire budget to other cities. So I want everyone to, who's, especially our young audience who's learning this, to, to know that differentiation between our city and other cities.
Certainly. The city of West Covina is one of four full-service cities in L.A. County without a dedicated revenue source to fund public safety, whether it be sales tax increases, property tax increase, a utility users tax that's dedicated to public safety. And those are the three that come to mind right away, there could be others.
Parcel tax, save tax.
So only four cities in L.A. County do not have those additional revenues?
That's correct.
And the rest of them do?
Yes.
Thank you, Robyn.
The budget reflects cuts in every category. We've reduced the number of sworn officers in the police department from ninety-nine to ninety. We're meeting with all of our bargaining groups and making slow progress, but some progress. And we've asked all employees to take a voluntary suspension of benefits by ten percent. We've reduced overtime in the fire department budget significantly. And even after we do all of these things, because of all the uncertainty during these times, we could be faced with deeper cuts in the near future. So tonight, we're asking, we're recommending to the city council that you approve Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-four that adopts the operating and capital improvement budget. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Robyn, okay, and the city council, okay, and any member has a question?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. I know you won't skip this, okay? Yeah, you've been waiting, go ahead.
Why do I get to be the leadoff every time? The issue of animal control was brought up, and the reason we are looking at it is because we've seen an astronomical increase in the cost from inland valley, and they've generated about a tenth, if I'm being generous, of the revenue they were supposed to generate to offset the cost that we thought was going to be significantly less. So it really leaves us with no choice but to look for possible other options. I like that they're no-kill also, but at this point in time, we have to look, because it's just not something we can maintain with the cost increase. It's going to be almost a million dollars this year, and it's supposed to be six hundred thousand.
Excuse me, okay, please, okay, yeah.
And so I'm, I know our staff is in contact with them and negotiating with them and trying to see what's going on. So there has been no decision to change from them or not, but we are looking at the cost. People, when it comes to the fire proposal, and I'm, to move to county, I'm not discussing it tonight, but I think it's important that people understand, yes, the feasibility study was part of a lawsuit that the FFA brought against the city. Some people express surprise, and I can understand, because what happens with lawsuits is when we settle, it's reported out at the meeting when we settle. And in this case, that was also. And so if you happen to attend that meeting, or look at the minutes from that meeting, you would have heard the city attorney report out the settlement of the case and some of the terms. The proposal to go to county, I think, is being confused with our fiscal emergency. And the proposal, one, that we're looking at the feasibility study, one, is part of the settlement of the lawsuit. Two, it's also part of the discussion to address structural deficits that have been going on, and to find out where those deficits are in a way that has been kicked down the road for a long time. When we're talking about the fiscal emergency, we are talking about the fact that if you get a paycheck that you expect to be a thousand dollars, and you have your savings account, and all of a sudden, you start getting five hundred dollars a month. You start spending into your savings account. And that's what's happening with the city in terms of its sales tax revenue because of COVID nineteen. So the fiscal emergency is because by September, we will not have cash on hand. So the city is facing two things. One, fiscal emergency, no cash. Two, the structural deficits that were ignored for far too long, that COVID nineteen has basically said, you have no choice. You don't have time any longer, you need to address it now. I do have concerns with the budget. Mr. Grivitch brought up a lot of them, and I don't think there's anyone sitting up here who says it's perfect, that we don't believe it's going to be amended quite a bit. The simple fact is, we do not know at this point what our revenues are going to be. We know that we usually get between one point two and one point eight million a month in sales tax. One month, we got six hundred thousand. The next month, we got five hundred and fifty thousand. And so the budget will be constantly looked at, monitored, and changed. People have asked, well, have you looked at cutting expenditures? Absolutely. And as many people have mentioned, staff on different levels is the biggest part of our budget. And unfortunately, the most we can say at this point is, yes, but a lot of those cuts and discussions about cuts and everything else are personnel matters that are not part of public discussion. And so I wish I could tell you more or give you more assurance, but there are laws about what we can say when it comes to negotiations and personnel. And so I hope that answers the questions that I heard, and I'll yield the floor until I come up with something else.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Shoemaker. Okay, any other council member?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
If I may.
And go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
Why, thank you, no, I do agree with Councilmember Shoemaker on one point about our budget, yes. Mr. Grivitch said one thing about it should be a tentative budget instead of amending it. You know what? It's never going to be perfect right now, you know, and I do agree, things are going to change. But I don't think our finance directors are holding over there, holding a crystal ball, saying, we're going to be this much, and we're going to be that much. I think we have to adjust as we go along, as we seize our tax revenue coming in, stuff like that, just have to make the adjustments then. So I'm willing to move forward with what we have, knowing that, and I do agree with your, Mr. Grivitch, on things that this isn't perfect, there are going to be some changes. I don't think this is a perfect budget, but I think we have to move forward, and I'm, and I think if we bring it up month by month, we can let you know month by month where we're going, and let you know that we are all aware of it, and we will make the adjustments as we move on.
Thank you, Councilman Castiano, go ahead.
Yeah, just to follow up on what both Councilmember Shoemaker and Councilmember Johnson have said, it's not pretty, but it's something we'll be monitoring closely monthly. We've all asked Robyn to keep us abreast of any incoming revenues, any changes. You know, there's been a lot of talk about defunding police. We've received over a hundred and fifty emails. One thing that I think everyone should recall, which was painful, is the overlap shift in the police department was previously taken away. So that was a very drastic form of defunding that has already occurred under the previous administration. Wasn't pretty, none of this is pretty. Our fire department also took a massive hit when Fire Engine Four was taken out of commission. All of our city departments are struggling. So we're, we're doing our best to do the best we can with the limited resources. Also, well, previously, when I asked the question of our finance director when she was giving the presentation, I was in response to Andrew Yip, his comments, so thank you for asking that. Also, Ms. Lopez, thank you for asking your questions. As Councilmember Lopez Viado mentioned earlier, please, please email us any, anything you see, because I'm constantly checking in our section, on our website, the agendas and minutes, to make sure that they're up, and I'm always communicating with our city manager and our assistant city clerk, Lisa, to make sure that those are up to date, because that's really important to me. The agendas are also posted out, outside, right outside our chamber, as well as at the city library, county library here in West Covina next door. And for Yusuf, thank you for, for your questions as well. We could also provide you a little bit more info, for, for everyone here in the audience, thank you guys for your questions, and really, I appreciate the delivery and the manner by which everyone has communicated with us today. It's constructive, and we welcome it. So for Yusuf, I'll get you some more information about some of, how our general fund does not fund some, some of our sidewalks and other things you mentioned, but what we would all like to do is, is keep everyone engaged and informed about which funds can be used for which things, to continue this creative thinking process. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilman Castiano, and, yep, go ahead.
Pretty much everything said. Thank you, Councilmember Shoemaker, for explaining. I know sometimes it's a little confusing with all this, but there's just so many things that it entails. I do appreciate that the residents who spoke yesterday, I know they made a comment that, oh, council's not here. It doesn't mean that we're not physically present, that we're not in attendance. I'm pretty sure my colleagues listened into the meeting, I know I did from beginning to end, and there was some perspective that, you know, I was like, oh, didn't think about that. And for some of you, I, you know, I spoke to you right after the council meeting. So, you know, sometimes they have these assumptions. Like I've always said, you're more than welcome to reach out to us, we're open, and I just wanted to thank everybody. I do appreciate when you come to the council or come with solutions or, you know, suggestions, because sometimes people just come and just hit and criticize and blame, and they don't offer anything constructive. So for those who do give insights, we appreciate that, because it opens up another side of view and perspective that we can probably consider and move and change. So I just wanted to thank everybody, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem Lopez Viado, okay, and I want to follow up on my colleague talking about, okay, about our budget. I think the budget is what taxpayers money, okay, this money is what everybody pay, and we, how we spend it, and we get elected, okay, that's why we're here for, okay? And, and I know, okay, the young generation, okay, that in the future, you might be the, the leader. You never know, you might sitting over here and to make a tough decision, because thirty years ago, I cannot believe I would sit over here. Okay, so you never know, you guy will have a chance, okay, to take over the baton and to continue. And I remember thirty years ago, when I watching, when I moving West Covina back in nineteen eighty-nine, I watching the city council meeting, and it's very interesting. And, and now you are going to sit over here, I think in the one day, okay? Don't underestimate about what your future, you never know, okay, because there's something you can contribute. But I want to share with some of you, talking about defund the police, okay, and why our police, okay, is forty-seven percent, and our, okay, firefighters department is thirty percent, is all total is seventy-seven percent. Our general fund, our general fund is about sixty-six million dollars. And that all come from, okay, majority from public tax and sale tax. Sale tax, twenty-four percent, it going to our general fund. Okay, and three percent is TOT tax, is hotel tax. So they add together, it's twenty-seven percent, it going to our general fund. And with the general fund, seventy-seven percent, it will go to police and fire. And I know you guys talking about, how can that be so much into our general fund? Because compared with some other city, West Covina is the, the less taxes city than any other city, okay? And if we, if you look around, the four city and other cities, Santa Monica, is a tourist town, so they can using that. I think they suffer big time right now, because they have no income coming in too. Okay, and then another one, Beverly Hill, okay, sorry, okay, the name, okay, it's not into, it's not, not a city council. In the future, after this meeting over, you can talk to me, or we can discuss, you and me, okay, or with your group, I have no problem at all. But I just want to share with you, okay, and that is what this about, we don't have utility tax, and Covina has ten percent utility tax, okay? We don't have a parcel tax, and we, El Monte has a parcel tax, pay for their police. Okay, so, okay, and then, okay, some other city, they have, like, San Marino, they have a safe, safety tax. They have a pop, okay, okay, utility tax, parcel tax, safety tax, to pay for their service, police and fire, they have a police and fire too, San Marino, population of twelve thousand. Okay, why they want that? Because they want have their own department, but they have to pay. And they anti-business, you can see San Marino doesn't have a business, they don't want business coming in. So residents willing to pay from their property tax, from their safer tax, from their utility tax, to pay for their service. So West Covina, the city, okay, we are majority based on the four thousand business. Our money coming from sales tax, coming from eight hotel we have, the TOT tax about three percent, and we get hundred percent, we don't share with county. Sale tax, we only get one penny out of a hundred. Sale tax, we only get one penny out of a hundred, hundred, okay, one dollars. So in that way, we need to sell a lot of cars, sell a lot of things, so we can using that money to pay for our public safety. So I think if you know your home, and where your income, and where your expenditure, okay? And then now, this twenty-seven percent due to the city, we be forced to shut down. We don't want to shut down, but because this virus, okay, county and state, as a, you have to shut down. So we have to shut down entire business, okay? Almost ninety-nine percent of business shut down in West Covina, and we have a four thousand business, modern pop business, now they struggling to come back. So this is a tough time, not only for us, I think it is for our, our small business, for their life-saving, investing in West Covina. It's very, very tough. I hope you understand. So we, we want to use the CEBG fund, and we using other thing to help them, give them ten thousand dollars. Hopefully, they can come back, hire employee, hire the staff. So, so, so right now, the city is struggling, is how can we help those business coming back to our city? So we can create job. Three months ago, we want to save life, okay? And we want to make sure people stay home, and we want to make sure people wear mask, and we provide the free mail, okay? We provide the deliver senior, okay, mail plan, and we basically provide the free mask. We want to save life. Now, after three, four months, what's next? We want to save job. We want to save the economy. No job, no economy, then our city doomed. So this is something we have to work on with, okay, right now, to create a job, create business. And the people say, hey, Mayo, why you now? You're not before, and try to help people, okay, to avoid to wear mask and stay home. Because if we don't have a job, we don't have business, now state and county already allows to open up the business. So we need to increase the people to have a life, and try to stay wear mask, social distance, wash your hand, so protect yourself. But most important thing is, we have gradually have your, our life, especially for young people, you must have a future. We cannot continue to shut down the business, and therefore, you guys' generation will be in trouble. So, so if you see all this, and based on how, how much money we have, I think it's very difficult to our finance director to predict what July income will be, how about August our income will be, how about September, how about October, how about November? So, so this is the thing, not like you can lay back on last year. We can, if we are normal time, we can see last year how much, and we can predict, and maybe we have some development coming in to help us save the day. But everything suspended, so in that way, we depend on our future will be monitored monthly to make sure we have income to pay our expenditure. For example, like, okay, Council, Councilmember Shoemaker talking about, you have one thousand dollar, now you only have five hundred dollars. You have no choice, you have to cut. Okay, do we have find other way to pay bill? We have to get a paycheck and make sure the city continue to operate. So this is what tonight's about. And we still have to approve this budget, like you say, tentative, a budget. Okay, this budget about what we will continue to monitor our income. And based on that, if our income not hidden on our target, then we have to go to another deeper cut, okay? People have to sacrifice with service, okay? And we will continue to monitor, make sure, okay? And maybe if you see so-called revenge shopping, and you can see people coming back, and now we already allow hotel have a luxury travel, so meaning what? Hotel might come back to business, we might get our ten percent TOT tax. So I talked to, okay, and holiday in, we check with them all the time. They said their business coming back. The hotel look like the business coming back. So in that way, they're pretty happy. They have confidence now. See, the economy is based on confidence. Well, you have confidence, people come out to spend the money, and then we, both based on that, we can get a piece of pie, that is a sales tax or TOT tax. So, and again, just want to share with you why we're here, to worry about, to operate our city, or our expenditure and our income, and make sure we are the gatekeeper, to make sure your, your tax dollar will be wisely be used. And talk about county, county fire is only one agenda. It's not everything, okay? There is have to be a solid number that we have a saving. Without a solid number, without the, okay, county sheriff come over, the chief come over here to give a presentation and tell us black and white, solid, that we have a saving, and we're not going to move anything, because we're not going to move something become more expensive. Okay, we want to make sure we have a good service and we have a fair cost. We're not going to change it to something, maybe same service or more cost. This will be stupid, okay? So, so don't have to worry about we're going to, like, we are willing to make our mind. Nobody make up their mind. Police and fire is like our baby. Fire with us for eighty-some years. We very proud to have a West Covina fire department in West Covina. It, it would be difficult to just let go, but we have to see the number. If the number makes sense, if they are so, okay, confident, then show us a number. Show us the contract. And they come over here in public, have our, okay, county chief over here, talk to the public. Make sense? So in that way, you guys can see eye to eye with their proposal. Not our fire department, not our council, not the city manager, sell it to, to our audience, no. Okay, county want to buy us out, show us the money, show us what kind of service they can provide, and how good we can save, and what we can, okay, service our resident even better. But the talk is cheap. Show us the number, show us the money, show the cost to our future, so the ten years contract, we want to make sure that is fair. We will, we will need to pay, but we're not, we're not going to pay supplemental and become more expensive. So, so this is something very important. I hope not only the audience, I think the firefighter have to understand, we're not going to just let go. We will see the true number, solid number, okay? And in that way, we are going to move on. If it's better, and you, you guys see, then it's a much better price and it's solid, then we have no choice. I, I would, I would cry to see my West Covina logo disappear, but, but what lives a life? It's better. But if it not, then it's not going to happen, because it's going to cost more. So conclusion is this, again, okay, we are working on this, I think based on how our finance directors see, and I know you're, you're going to have a tough time to monitor this, but this is just tempted, like you say, the tentative, okay, budget to that, this we can pay the bill, but we are going to continue to monitor, to see how is our income doing. You never know, maybe we hit the jackpot, okay? So, so we can get some income coming in and to pay the bill, okay? And to make sure we, we, we can make, okay, have a good service and continue to move. Other than that, everybody have to sacrifice. Everybody have to pitch in. Everybody pitch, if our residents suffer for these three months, okay, lost their job, lost their business, our city employee have to pitch in. It's no like somebody still continue to get the same thing, and our resident continue to suffer to pay more, it's not going to happen. So, so in the tough time, we are all together, we in the same boat. So in that way, when we united, we stand, we can get through this. And, and I, again, to share with young people like you guys, our future, West Covina future is very bright. I can very, okay, confidently tell you this, it will, it will be so vibrant. Why? Because we have ten freeway, we have Ontario Airport, okay? We are centrally, centrally located. So don't, don't, don't underestimate about our city. Our city will be a great city, and you are going to so proud of living in West Covina. So don't move out, okay? Have a job in West Covina, create your job over here, create business, okay? We depend on you guys. Okay, thank you so much. Anybody want to say anything yet?
We're voting no.
You, you know, you want, okay, you want me to talk more? Okay, I can talk forever, I can talk whole night. And any you guys want to talk to me privately, I will willing to, okay, speak to you and exchange any information, okay? And, and hopefully, can help you. Other than that, okay, do I have a motion to approve this budget, so we can move on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve this budget.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, okay, I have Councilman Castellano move the motion. I have Mayor Proton, Lopez Viado, second. And Rocko, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
No.
Mayor Protim Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, and a motion approved for one. Okay, now we going to, okay, move on. And again, okay, this is just approved, so we can pay bill, but we will continue bringing it back monthly, okay, to see how our budget and see how we do, and with all the issue we are, okay, moving on. Okay, and of course, we don't have AB one, two, three, four conference and meeting. Now we going to the city council. Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a request. During these difficult times, there's been considerable attention and new state and federal laws governing police use of force. I'd like for the city council to review our city's policies, including the sharing of images, as has been discussed many times. I would like for us to, to discuss that, maybe consider options, maybe something more descriptive for the residents in terms of getting an idea of what kinds of crimes are being committed, committed in our community. That's my request, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and so, so, okay, any objection? No objections, so would you please, okay, okay, city manager, okay, and to, okay, deliver this, okay? I think another thing is, I think the young people talking about defund and police, okay, issue thing, as you want to piggyback what you just say, and regarding, okay, our police department, okay, how we have a policy and looking to any potential, okay, and showing the public, okay, we care, and we want to let them know, our police department is follow the guideline, okay? And with anything, the structures, do we have any change, any requirement, okay? And to make sure the police is our community police, okay? It's not like some people, okay, okay, concern our police is some kind of force to scare people. I think it's important to let people understand, police is coming from our resident, it come from our population, is, is, is human, okay? It's not like they are oppressive to over here. Their job is protect and serve. Their job is try to help us, okay, and to make peace, okay? And they are peacemaker, and to, to catch the crime. I, I think it's important for our resident to understand, okay, let the trust with our police officer, and I think, and then police officer have to show to our resident, okay, about their image, okay? I think, I think our police department has a pretty good image, okay? But still, okay, we can look into it, and to go back to our concern, okay, resident, and to make sure that, okay, our police is well-rounded, okay, and address the concern of our resident, okay? If not...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to reiterate to all the residents that there's not a council member sitting up here that has decided which way, one way or the other, about county fire. You know, our minds are wide open. You know, we want to listen to all the residents, and then like the mayor says, we have to see all the numbers. I want every member out there, resident out there to say, if it makes sense here, the dollars makes sense to the city, that where the city will actually save money, not just this year, next year, five years, ten years down the road, and still have good service, then it might be something that we may consider. But as it is right now, we have no numbers. There's nothing that we are even discuss. We've already told them, without numbers, we're not even going to discuss it. So I just want you to be assured that as a council members, if it does come back for us to decide, like we've discussed, the mayor said, the chief, county chief has to be here. We, you know, he has to say, your contract will be this, 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 and this. And if it makes sense, then it's something that we may consider. We still may not do it, but it's something that we will consider. So just be assured that not, the five council members, if not one of us has made the decision one way or the other. Thank you.
Very good. Any other council member comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
As part of Councilmember Castellanos' request, I would like to add the community services that our police do provide and the training they have, things like the HOPE team. So, because I think there's a perception that somehow they're a military agency, and that could not be further from the truth, and examples of how often they are, the police officers are participating in the community, attending events, and, you know, something that shows the full picture of who they are. I know Chief Bell mentioned that an email we had gotten, it contained inaccurate data. I think it would be wise to maybe, as part of the presentation, have those numbers there again. And then, to what Councilman Johnson said, I think it's important to note that while we're talking about needing numbers, that is, so we can compare apples to apples, but it is not our main concern. So if this county can provide all of the equipment and maintenance that our fire department needs in a way we can't, that is part of the consideration also, not just if they're more expensive. And so I just don't want that to get lost in translation. The five of us want the full picture on both sides, and so that we can make a decision that's best for our residents.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Any other council member want to continue? Are you sure? I have more want to say. I don't want the party's over. Okay, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, okay. And meeting adjourned. Thank you so much. Have a good night. Thank you for coming, okay? Okay, I wish you, okay, the best, okay? And I see you next time when the city council meeting, July seventh, okay?